Okay, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the school committee meeting of Thursday, June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty one. In keeping with an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law by Governor Baker on June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one. This meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board members will be remote and attendance shall count toward quorum. The meeting will be broadcast live on Facebook and recorded on eChat. This meeting is open to the public. We will take questions via the chat feature at the bottom of your screen. When submitting questions, please make sure that you include your full name and address. We will do our best to answer all questions, however, we will not read questions that have already been answered. Okay. So first item on the agenda are the meeting minutes from June tenth. Any questions, comments, or feedback? Not seeing any. Nancy, did you have any?
No.
Okay. All right, then I make a motion then to accept the meeting minutes from June tenth, two thousand and twenty one. Can I get a second?
Second, DeLuca.
Okay, and roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Star, yes. And Jackie, are you on mute?
Jackie, can you hear us?
Hmm.
Text her.
Okay. Pause for a second if somebody can message. Can you hear us?
Unmute Jackie.
I don't think you can hear us. Yeah, she can't hear us.
Okay.
Go out and come back in again. She can't hear us anyway.
No sound?
Oh, there you go.
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
Okay. Okay, so we'll need, we need a I think we need a form to pass this one, so we'll, we'll hold off and wait until Jackie can hear us.
So, yeah, Jackie's gonna go out and come back in again.
Okay, please.
If we've learned anything from remote learning, that's the way to go.
That's right.
The kids are yelling at their teachers, "I can't hear you." We're just gonna have some great memories.
The first step of IT support is you turn it off and turn it back on again.
Can you hear us, Jackie?
Audio still. Good, no?
Oh my goodness.
Do you have kids?
Or telephone? Yeah. Can you hear us? Okay.
Okay, unmute.
We're good.
Unmute yourself.
Okay, now I can hear you. I don't know why my computer wasn't working.
That's weird.
My computer wasn't working.
It's okay.
Great, so we opened the meeting and, and we are just voting on the minutes from June tenth. So did you have any, any edits or questions on that?
No.
All right, so why don't we, I'll go ahead and start the vote over then. So I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of June tenth, two thousand and twenty one. And Nancy had seconded it earlier.
Second.
Second again, maybe?
Okay.
Okay, and roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes. Okay, great. We are on a roll.
Hmm.
Okay. So, uh, next item on the agenda is the presentation with vote to approve an Eagle Scout project. So Dr. Cabral?
So we do have, Lynn has brought over Ben Kempner. Hi, Ben, how are you?
Hello.
And he informed us that, um, he is going, he's proposing, I'll let him explain it, but, um, overall, he is proposing that his Eagle Scout project, include an installation of some equipment on school property, and so that requires a vote. Um, I will let him give you the details, though. I don't want to steal any of his thunder. I know his presentation is part of the, is part of the, um, accomplishment. So Ben, please feel free to jump in.
Okay, thank you. Nice share, uh, my presentation.
We can't hear you very well.
Oh, uh, hold on. Um.
That's a little bit better.
A little better.
Uh, do I need to get closer to my microphone? Can you hear me?
Yes, that's better. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to, uh, share. Hi, uh, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. So I'd like to propose my Eagle Scout project. I've, um, worked with, uh, Bill Matthews and, uh, uh, and his secretary, uh, the, uh, Corinne, uh, to get the planning stages of this. Um. I want my, uh, outline is that I want to install five pieces of, uh, exercise equipment, uh, outside Oliver Ames in the sports fields behind the school. Um, specifically, I'd want to place the five pieces of equipment, um, in the area with the trees next to the track, like between the track and the sports field with the ramp going down, that, you know, the area of trees. I want to have them placed, uh, under there on the end of that closest to the school. Um. The fundraising for the project would be done by me and my, uh, volunteers from the scout troop. Uh, we'd work to raise money and install it by ourselves. The only thing I need is your approval from the board to allow the construction to follow through. I'm planning on getting this fundraised and finished by the end of the summer before the next school year starts. Um.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, um. And the five pieces of equipment I have are a sit, a sit up bench, uh, the triple chin up bar, uh, dip station, stretching post, and push up bar. They'd all be placed in a relatively enclosed area, um, to each other, and I think that uh, students, school sports teams, and people who frequent the sports fields behind the school would find these very helpful. There's not everyone has access to, um, exercise equipment, and I think it would be great for accessible equipment to be available to the community where anyone could visit and use it for their own benefit. Um, it would promote, uh, physical health. I think that's important, especially over the past year, and people have been inside. But, um, now that we're gonna return to a somewhat normal school schedule, I think it'd be great for uh, these pieces of equipment to be available to everyone in Easton. Um, I hope you, uh, appreciate, um, my idea, and I hope I'd be able to follow through with this. Um. I appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome.
Um, does anybody, does anybody have any questions for Ben or comments?
I'd love to answer questions. Yes.
Okay, go.
Um, this is awesome, Ben. You put a lot of time and thought into this, and I think that'll be um, wonderful addition to that new field area in the back. So, good work. I'm looking forward.
Thank you. Uh, yeah.
Hi, thank you. This looks like a great idea. Thank you for doing this. Um, I just have a question about the installation. Do you know, um, I'm not sure like what kind of installation this would require. Do you need professional people to do this? Is this something you can do yourself?
No, uh, the installation and fundraising, everything about the project is going to be done by me and volunteers. Uh, we're only going to need, uh, like shovels, uh, it's something that like we can accomplish with tools we can find that we have at home. It's not going to be something too tasking that we'll need to call in external help.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna, yeah, thank you. So I'm gonna also ask about the installation. So for example, the triple chin up bars, because I couldn't see the bars going across. I just looked it up online. Would those have to be secured into the ground with like cement? Like, do you have to make, put buckets of cement in and then put the, um, chin up bars in place?
Yeah, this, this is going, they're going to be secured in the ground.
Okay, okay. My second-
It's not gonna be just sitting there.
Yeah, well, you know, I don't want anybody getting bobbed off the head, right?
Yeah.
The other thing, this is like over three thousand, you know, with the prices you show us here.
Yeah.
How do you plan on fundraising and how do we find out about it?
Um. I'm gonna be fundraising with my scout troop. I'm gonna hold multiple events. I'm planning on setting up a car wash, um, and multiple other fundraising events. Uh, recently, one of the other scouts in my troop was fundraising for his project and raised uh, one thousand five hundred dollars with a car wash. So I'm planning on having multiple events to secure the funding for what I want to accomplish.
Okay, and, um, and as you said, you want to place these, uh, pieces of equipment in the shade under the trees. I mean, most of them are all metal, right? Most of these items. So, I mean, is, uh, if it does get sunny, is it gonna put, will it pose a danger to, say, little ones that might climb on there?
Um. I don't think so. Uh, I don't think the metal will get like too hot in the sun.
Okay.
It will really only get as hot as, say, like any other metal fences by the, uh, track. It won't be, pose any sort of danger.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Ben, uh, great job. I agree with you that this has, uh, broad appeal. It can be used by a lot of people for a great purpose, uh, fitness and wellness. Um, have you, I know you spoke to Corinne McCarthy, who's the head of the phys ed department, and also, uh, Mr. Matthews, who's the athletic director. Have, have you spoken to Mr. Twombly yet? David Twombly?
I don't think I have.
Okay, so I, I'm gonna suggest that, um, as you go forward, just to make sure, um, that, that you are getting um, the information from all angles here. He is, he, his title is Director of Operations. He is on vacation next week, so it would have to be after next week. Um, he is the Director of Operations, and he's here at Central Office. His email is D. Twombly with the regular, um, suffix of the school email. He actually, um, checks into contracting permits, um, insurance, things like that. And he will just make sure that he looks over everything to make sure that you have everything you need to move ahead. Um, and you don't have to worry about any liability issues or anything like that. I know that's not the fun part of a project, but it is an important part. So uh, I would ask you to just reach out to him after next week, and he can lead you through any processes you might need to do on that end.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I'll, I'll make sure that I get in touch with him as soon as he's available.
Great, thank you.
And that, Dr. Cabral, would that cover, would, would, uh, Mr. Twombly's work cover things like Dig Safe and
Exactly.
and anything else? Yeah, okay.
He communicates with the DPW, um, to make sure there's no permitting necessary, make sure that the, um, district policy covers that, any legal language that needs to be done, like the, um, gifting of the, of the equipment to the Easton Public Schools, anything like that. I don't know that that's necessary here, but that's, that's his job. So that's exactly why I'd like to, to, just to make sure you go through him and he can advise you.
Did I see, did somebody else have a question? I thought I saw a hand pop up. No? Okay, so, um, any, any other comments or feedback for Ben? No? All right, great. Well, Ben, thank you so much for presenting. This is, um, a really creative project that I, I commend you for, um, thinking of something that'll benefit the school community and the community at large. So, great job, congratulations. Okay, so, uh, so then I guess the next step, we then would, were voting to approve this, um, and if, you know, approval would be, uh, we can vote to approve this, and then if there are any issues that surface after the meeting with Mr. Twombly, we can address those later. So, or do we want to hold off on voting until?
No, uh, well, you can vote to, uh, you can vote to allow Ben to continue on the process. Um, and then he can perhaps come back if, uh, he finds out that he needs any other information from Mr. Twombly, and you can do a final vote when he's ready to install the pieces, because obviously he'll have to do the fundraising first and all that. So you should have appropriate time. Our next meeting is July twenty second, Ben, but if that is, uh, if that doesn't work, we can always, um, work around that to, to
Okay.
help you with your timetable. But, um, I would imagine you're gonna need at least that much time. That's a very ambitious goal. I'm confident you can do it, but I know it's gonna take a little bit of time.
Okay. All right, great. And so I move then to, uh, to approve Ben Kempner moving ahead with his Eagle Scout project. Can I get a second? And all in favor?
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes. Okay, great. Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Ben.
Okay.
Do I need to, uh, stay for the, for the, um, rest of your, uh, items on your agenda, or should I sign off?
You are welcome to stay, but you certainly don't have to.
Okay. That's okay. Well, thank you for, uh, having me here and, uh, working with me. I appreciate it, and I'm excited to, uh, continue going on my process for my project. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Goodbye.
Okay.
Have a good night.
You too.
So, so now with, um, with Michelle present, uh, I wonder if our, if any of our veterans can weigh in on, she take over? Yeah, is there any reason to not have Michelle? You don't have to do anything parliamentary to, okay, excellent. All right, Michelle, you're up then if you want to be.
All right, um, so next on the agenda is EMS sports. Dr. Cabral?
Uh, I want to start by saying that, well, first of all, last year, you know, that Mr. Carroll, EMS principal, and Bill Matthews, Athletic Director, had brought forward some adjustments to middle school sports. I, I just want to note that even in a year that was absolutely indescribable, they continued to have an eye on the evolution of sports in the middle school and how they might be able to continue, continue to provide opportunities, equitable opportunities for as many grades and for, um, boy's sports and girl's sports as possible in as many seasons as possible. They worked together collaboratively and approached me about a week ago to review a revised plan that they have going forward. And they are here this evening to, uh, present that plan to you. Um, Mr. Carroll is here and Mr. Matthews, I believe, is coming in now. And so I will turn it over to them, and, uh, they will present their proposal. Uh, you do not need to vote on it because it isn't, uh, budget dependent. And so we do, we do think it's important, though, to keep you informed of how that develops, and I do want them to get the credit they deserve for really trying to continually think outside the box to provide opportunities to our students at the middle school. So, uh, Mr. Carroll, Mr. Matthews?
Luke, you want me to go first? Or would you like to start?
Oh, you can, you can go first.
Thanks, buddy. Um, as, uh, Dr. Cabral just mentioned, we made some adjustments last year to try to better align the resources that we have um, to the needs of the community and the opportunities that are available. So, we made some changes last year. We didn't fully implement all of them because of COVID, but we were able to bring the field hockey teams in-house, and we did, um, in fact, uh, schedule them and competed middle school field hockey last year. That was the only middle school sport that we competed. What we ran into with middle school field hockey is that we were kind of a fish out of water with a couple of the teams. So we field three teams. We have that much interest, um, at that, like, those grade levels at six, seven, and eight, uh, to field three teams. But in order to get games, schedule games for two of those teams, we had to, um, we had to schedule them in a non-interscholastic, uh, way. We had to join a league that really is a like a town type of league or a travel league. So we didn't really fit with them. We, we went through the season, things worked out okay, but it, it's really not where we belong. So we sat down with Luke, and the plan that we came up basically to align our resources and to try to offer opportunities that don't exist in town is to to transition two of the field hockey teams to the rec department. We've had conversations with Ann Daly about that, and there is an appetite for the rec department to take on those two teams and continue to offer opportunities there. Uh, we'd like to launch volleyball. That was in our previous plan, but we'd like to launch that this fall, do everything that we can to hire a coach, get a program going, and schedule, um, schedule matches. It remains to be seen how many opportunities are out there. I know there's a handful of, um, other middle school programs, but, um, that's a, a sport that we don't have youth opportunities in town. In basketball, as part of the previous plan, we were going to eliminate this, the, the standalone seventh grade teams. We have, we had seventh grade boys, seventh girls, eighth grade boys, eighth grade girls. Very, very difficult to schedule games for those seventh graders. There's not, um, there's not much for available teams out there that were competitive for them. So our proposal last year that was approved was, um, to go to a seventh and eighth grade combined team. Um, we would also launch the wrestling program, which was part of our plan last year. And then we'd like to explore, um, the possibility of developing a middle school, um, tennis program. The tennis programs at the high school level were really kind of struggling with kids that are interested. Um, I guess at the girl's side, we have a pretty strong interest. On the boy's side, we have a difficult time even getting to seven players to compete. And I think it's a real need in the community to see if there are opportunities that we could develop at the middle school level. Ultimately, the budget impact, uh, to these changes, less than a thousand dollars either way, it could be favorable, unfavorable, depends a little bit on how many games we're able to schedule. But that's an overview of the plan, so I just, um, turn it over to Luke for any additional comments that I might have overlooked.
No, I, I don't think you overlooked anything. I mean, I know that, uh, you know, when my own daughter, uh, you know, played field hockey, it was predominantly recreation departments, a lot of Saturday games and things like that. So, um, you know, I can't, I can't speak to the scheduling part of it, because I think, uh, you know, ultimately you had to deal with a lot of that this year. Um, but I can see, you know, sort of the value in that, and, you know, certainly it, um, you know, we, it, we never want to be in a situation, as you know, when we've had this conversation a million times, Bill, um, you know, I, I don't want to be, you know, we don't want to lose opportunities for kids. Uh, but sometimes, you know, you do have to, uh, you know, you do have to shrink a little bit before you can sort of expand back. And, you know, our ultimate goal is to have, uh, offerings that are, uh, for both boys and girls in grade six, seven, and eight, and something in every season. And I think this creeps us, uh, closer to that end goal. Um, so I'm pretty happy about that.
Any comments or questions? I can't see a paper. Jen?
Um, one, uh, one question. A parent asked me recently if there's anything for golf, uh, either boys or girls below the high school age. Just wondering if you have any feedback on if you've heard any interest in that, if they, if that is something that's offered even remotely, uh, at all, not, not remotely in that sense, but, um, if, um, you know, is, is there anything in the state for golf, um, below the high school level?
I would have to look at the survey that I did a few years ago of the middle school, uh, sports opportunities in the area. There may be a handful of teams out there. It's not something that I've discussed with Luke, so I'm not gonna make any promises that we would launch a program like that. But certainly, once we get this plan in place and really expand it to its fullest potential, like volleyball, you know, you start off with a seventh and eighth grade team. I'd love to see that go into the sixth grade, see more opportunities there. I just don't know, without getting into the scheduling and, and working with some of these opposing athletic directors, as to whether or not there are additional opportunities at the younger, um, grade levels. But if there are, I think we can kind of expand into that, same with wrestling. And then start looking at what additional sports we might be able to field, and at that point in time, we'd have to start talking about what the budgetary impact would be. What would it cost to, um, pay the greens fees for kids to participate, something like that, um, coaching buses, those are really the big things, the big budget items.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Jackie?
Um, thank you for all of the thought that you're putting into this. Um, for the wrestling that you're, um, launching, is that just gonna be seventh and eighth, or are you gonna loop in sixth grade too?
Uh, I believe that we'll be able to include sixth graders in that, and although it's a boys' wrestling program, it's not uncommon to have girls participate in wrestling. Um, and so there would be some opportunities for them as well.
Okay, thank you.
That's also true of the volleyball, right? Bill and Luke, if, uh, if any boys want to participate in the girls' volleyball?
Correct.
Any other questions, comments, Nancy?
Um, the kids will, do they still pay the activity fee for sports at the middle school for all of these things?
Yes. Because we do have, we have coaching stipends, we have official fees, and we have bus expenses. So the activity fees do help to offset a portion of that.
And in, as, as Bill said, in, in the, um, in sports like swimming, gymnastics, golf, there's the additional charge of site fees as well.
Correct.
Anyone else? No? All right, and it doesn't require a vote, so thank you, uh, Bill and Luke for coming and, well, I'm sharing that with us, and, um, I agree, lots of, um, thought and effort has gone into this, and I think it's gonna really pay off in a, a wonderful program. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Watch my tweets this afternoon. I'm at the Allstate meet, and we've got a number of runners today that are, uh, highly competitive, and we're hoping for some good results here.
Oh, exciting.
Yeah.
Why can't we be there? No offense, school.
Kyle Sarny is, uh, the number one seed in the two mile. Um, just gonna be excited to watch that. Jenna Gilman, Kitty Sobirage, uh, Kagan Hodges, and, um, uh, Emily Myers are all competing today, so keep an ear, all right, thanks.
Enjoy.
Bye.
Thank you. All right.
Carol.
Vote to approve the North River Collaborative contract. Dr. Cabral?
Okay, the contract that you have in your packets is the same contract that we've been using with North River Collaborative. Uh, it is the same charge as well, just to refresh your memory or to tell our two people watching that, um, the North River Collaborative is a, is a collaborative, a special education collaborative. We don't necessarily belong to it. We belong to BIKO, but we have, uh, had a very gratuitous relationship with North River Collaborative. Most special education collaboratives do rent space. They don't typically have their own school They don't typically have their own school proper facilities. If they do, they don't usually have it for all of their programs, so they very typically have programs or even entire, entire programs or one-offs in participating schools or local schools. We started this relationship several years ago. I spoke, I have spoken many times to the executive director, Steve Donovan. They are absolutely thrilled with what they have in Easton. They are constantly looking for more space. Unfortunately, we don't have it. In fact, we used to rent them three classrooms at Richardson Olmstead and unfortunately, we're down to two. They would, they are looking for space in the high school as well. We simply don't have it right now. We're going to keep an eye on it and see how things develop. We have had some adjustments in buildings, for example. We've broken down computer labs, for example, now that we're one-to-one district. Still got to get used to saying that. And moved things around and consolidated programs and not for the purpose of renting, but it has, it has resulted in these one-off spaces that are available. It's a positive to us, not only as a revenue source. As you can see in the contract, we charge fifteen thousand dollars a room, which is generally a very median going rate. So, it's a revenue source of thirty thousand dollars that goes right into the special education revolving account. How, but we have this population of high-needs students, some medically fragile children that we do not service in the Easton Public Schools. These are children that we would outplace because we don't have the facilities and the staff to serve particular programs. So, if we do have students, for example, that would require the services, they could still be in our own schools. But also, it gives our children the opportunity to interact with very different abled youngsters and peers. And that has been an unbelievable experience. Part of why the staff, the North River staff and the executive director have expressed how much they love being in Easton is because they have not been seen as renters. They have been very welcomed into the community by Mr. Getchell, the staff, and the children. They are part of the community. They are classmates with the other, or schoolmates with the other students in the building. They interact with the other students. And it's just been a really great experience for everyone involved. So, it's kind of a win-win-win all around. I wish, as I said, we had more space. We'll certainly keep an eye out for that because they are in the market for more space. But right now, this really is all we have to offer and the only school we have to offer it at this point. But it is, as I said, a revenue source. It's a wonderful interaction opportunity. And it also helps out one of our special education collaboratives, the North River Collaborative. So, this is to just vote to continue the contract. And as I said, there are no verbiage changes to it. And the rent we're asking for is, is the same as it was in the last contract.
Any questions, comments? All right. Would someone like to make a motion to accept this contract?
I make a motion to accept the North River Collaborative agreement, contract for rental at RO.
Wiseman second.
All right, roll call vote. Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Sorry, yes.
Vote to accept annual contracts. Dr. Cabral?
So, this is the time of year where contracts are accepted for the upcoming school year and beyond. So, you're going to have a couple more contract items here. One is the annual review of contracts with pre-approved vendors. All of the vendors in the list that you have are on the state contract or they belong to a collaborative. They are for maintenance, supplies, technology, hardware. This is just a pre-approval of these vendors so that we can do business with them throughout the school year.
Questions, comments? Someone want to make a motion to accept the annual contracts list?
I will move, Wiseman. I'll move to accept the annual contracts.
Second? Right, Durant, second? Roll call vote. Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman?
Sorry, yes.
Vote to accept the Stonem, Chandler, and Miller contract. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So, Stoneman Chandler and Miller is the district's legal counsel. They have worked with the district, I want to say, oh, for over twenty-five years. They have great institutional, historical background knowledge of the district and how it's evolved over the years. They, you can see the, in the contract attached that they provide, that we have a retainer with them and they provide services for all contract negotiations, legal counsel, legal guidance on any disciplinary or termination proceedings. They provide counsel to the school committee. Everything except what you see delineated on the contract, which are things like if we need to go to a board of appeals for special education, if we have any legal proceedings outside of the scope of the contract, arbitrations, those things we pay on an hourly basis. But I do believe that the retainer has really saved the district a tremendous amount of money over time. We get quality services from a team of attorneys and as opposed to contracting with one attorney. Stoneman Chandler and Miller, they're, provides us with our primary point of contact, who helps us with the day-to-day operations. And I literally talk to her daily. And we also have specialists for labor law, specialists for special education law, specialists for personnel, different things. So, it, it really has been a huge bang for our buck. You can see that the annual cost of the retainer is eighty thousand dollars. This was part of a, a review that Stoneman Chandler and Miller did about three years ago when we were going into contract negotiations for our last three-year contract. They presented the, as you know, any attorney keeps very intricate details on the amount of time invested in a particular district. And they presented that to us and we made a modification to increase that retainer modestly, I think it was ten thousand dollars, which we hadn't done for several years. So, it was definitely appropriate at the time. They have agreed to continue for the fiscal years twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four at the stable contract rate. They are not asking us for anything additional at this point. So, I would ask for your approval of the Stoneman Chandler Miller three-year contract and annual retainer of eighty thousand dollars.
Any questions, comments? All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Stonem, Chandler, and Miller contract. For a second? Roll call vote. Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. All right, personnel change. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. Deborah L. Terry started working at the Easton Public Schools in September of nineteen ninety-nine as a special education aide at what was then the F.L. Olmstead School. She remains at the Richardson Olmstead School today. She's a paraprofessional and she plans to retire on November first after twenty-two years of service. Unfortunately, she's not able to be here this evening, but certainly we wish Deb well. It's always kind of a selfish positive for me. If somebody's going to return at the beginning of a year, especially a year like this, because I have the opportunity to see them and wish them well and celebrate their accomplishment. And very happy for Deb. It's going to obviously be a loss to the district, but it's a well-deserved retirement and we congratulate her on that.
All right. Dear Dr. Cabral, please accept this letter as notification of my retirement from the Easton School District and in particular, Richardson Olmstead Elementary School. My official retirement date will be November first, two thousand twenty-one. I've generally enjoyed the time I spent at the school and I'm extremely happy that I spent the last twenty-two years of my twenty-eight-year career at RO. I have always given my best to my students. In return, they gave their best to me. During my many years of service at RO, I've grown and flourished. I've learned much from the teachers, administrators, and fellow parents. I wish you and the students in RO all the best in the years to come. I plan to stay in the area and hopefully become a substitute from time to time at the school after taking some time off to spend with my family, in particular, my three-year-old and one-week-old grandsons. Sincerely, Deborah L. Terry.
So, I was going to make my, my very common comment that we lose more professionals to their beautiful grandbabies than anything else. But I, I knew it was in her letter and I didn't want to spoil it. But certainly, she's got a lot to look forward to and those grandchildren are going to be lucky to have her around.
Any comments? Nancy?
Yep, so I've known Debbie for a long time. I think I had her kids in school. And anyway, just a real hard worker and a special person and she will be missed over at RO. So, congratulations, Debbie. You're going to love retirement. But we have you until November, so that's good.
Anyone else? All right, someone like to make a motion to accept the retirement?
So moved.
Okay.
With regret.
With regrets.
Wiseman, second.
All right, roll call vote. Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. All right, vote to accept donations for art department at EMS. Dr. Cabral?
So, the EMS art department has been fortunate to receive two more donations. We all know that this is the feeder program for our incredible art program at the high school. And so, anytime that materials, especially consumables, are able to be donated, that's a plus for the department. Blueview Nurseries Incorporated in Norton has generously donated two thousand dollars. And Advanced Technology Innovation Corporation in Rentham has donated fifteen hundred dollars to go directly to the art department at Easton Middle School. This is a vote to accept those two very generous donations.
Dr. Cabral, could you tell me the second one, advanced?
Advanced, Advanced Technology Innovation Corporation in Rentham.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Someone want to make a motion to accept the donations? Need to do them separately or can we do them together? Do you want to do them separately?
Uh, yeah, you might want to do them separately.
All right, so can I get a motion to accept the two thousand dollars from the Blueview Nurseries?
So moved, Wiseman.
Second?
Sorry, second.
Roll call vote. Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Sorry, yes.
And thank you to them. And can I get a motion to accept the fifteen hundred dollar donation from Advanced Technologies Innovations?
So moved. DeLuca?
Second?
Wiseman, second.
Roll call vote. Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Sorry, yes.
Great, thank you. And thank you to them. That was very generous. All right, superintendent's goals. Dr. Cabral?
I provided the chair and the vice chair with some documentation from Mas, Mas, uh, MASK, Mass Association of School Committees, the organization that you belong to, and also DESI, Department of Education. I had given it to chairs in the past. It's very dense with material, but it does give an overview of the process for evaluations of the superintendent. This is just as a sort of a quick overview and I can certainly get into much more detail if you'd like. But this is a process that is done in the public. The goals that I set needed to be accepted by the school committee, which you did accept. I then complete a, an end-of-year report for a summative evaluation. I have completed that report. I'm going to share that as a Google Doc with each of you. I wanted to get, I mentioned this at the last meeting, but I wanted to give it to you in advance because I want to make sure that if you have any clarifying questions or you see anything that's missing, you can let me know. Again, it is not for any sort of deliberation. You shouldn't be writing comments on there of a judgment nature. That is for the open meeting. That is simply if you have a clarifying question like, I can't get this link to open. Can you send me this piece of evidence directly? Or what does this acronym mean? Something like that. And I'd be happy to even get on the telephone, kind of explain some more detailed things one-on-one with each of you. What I've done is set it up the exact same way that I have done it in the past. It doesn't exactly look like the DESI template because I include more information. I think it's important to have all the evidence on there as links available for you, for your reference. So, I'm going to set it up the same way that I set up my goals. But of course, I filled in all of the measures of success, the evidence of that. Some are more tangible than others. All of the tangible measures of success and pieces of evidence are links. I have provided that information to Lynn, most of it. A couple more things to give her. And you will see, as soon as I share it with you, right at the conclusion of this meeting, you'll see that the links are starting to be populated. She will just keep populating those. Again, I think it's important to have a historical repository of this information. So, there are some things that you are very familiar with, like the school reopening plan, for example. That will still be a link because that, that way we can preserve this for the future if necessary for reference. If anybody would like to reference it, it is a public document. So, just to make it easier for anyone in the public who may not have as easy access to certain things as perhaps you do. So, that document will be provided to you and we do need to get the evaluation completed in July. So, if by the July twenty-second meeting, you can, if you remember, there was a sort of a change to the process and what was allowed. And I believe what you had decided to do as a committee last time was to fill out the individual ratings forms and complete comments and send it directly to the chair. And then the chair, who I believe the last time I was evaluated was Nancy, I believe, put all of that information together. And then at the July twenty-second meeting, what happens is you present that to me and to the public during an open televised, recorded meeting, posterity. Because that's how everybody loves to do their evaluation and that's perfectly fine. But it will be on the agenda. It will be totally up for your discussion. And then at the end of that, once you are able to see what everybody else put for comments or I'll answer any questions you might have, then you would vote on your final, your final grading, so to speak, your, your indicators. There is a form where there's literally, you know, does not meet expectations, meets expectations, exceeds expectations. You'll need to vote on what you would like for each indicator and then in overall. I also asked Lynn to send you the last summative evaluation I received so that you could see how that, what that form looks like and how that was done. So, sort of procedurally, that's, that's how we go forward. Typically, there's a formative year, which is more informative. It's what all of our staff has, which means that there's, I give an update on my Which means that there's, uh, I give an update on my goals to that point. And then I get feedback on them. And then the second year of a cycle is when we do this full summative process. Unfortunately, the last time we did summative was two years ago and then last year was sort of compromised. While I did create goals. We did not, we weren't in session and hadn't even figured out school committee really at that point to, to do this. That was fine though, because the commissioner did provide some latitude on that for all employees, including superintendent. And so what they did was carry over, um, the determination from the prior year. And then this year would be the summative again. Typically, you create goals that are, um. Rigorous and take a while to implement, and so that's why they're structured to be two-year goals. This year, of course, was a little bit different. There were some very urgent and immediate goals and so. I. Pretty much. Accomplished all of them. In my opinion, obviously, that's for you, um, to determine based on the evidence that I provide. So it was even, it's, it's not, I don't think it's necessary to carry, carry it over to next year. Some of the things are less applicable to next, next year. And so what I would do is over the summer and in the fall, provide you with a new set of goals for a two-year cycle for your feedback and approval. Does that make sense procedurally? Can I answer any questions or, um, provide any other documentation? I do have five goals this time around. And again, I'm gonna share the link with you as soon as this is over. The first is about. Instructional leadership, instructional and curricular curriculum leadership, and so that was very targeted to. Basically redefining instruction, curriculum and assessment for hybrid, remote and in-person platforms during the pandemic. The second was management and operations and creating a safe and comfortable environment. Social, emotionally and physically for all staff and students. The third was about family and community engagement. This one is not necessarily as. Focused on the pandemic. We felt strongly that there were two things that as a district we wanted to maintain. And continue to nurture and advance throughout the pandemic and one of them. Was the career and college pathways that we're creating at the high school. So one of my charges this year was to really create some partnerships. With some higher ed institutions and communities partnerships and, and other districts. To try to create more opportunities for high school students and so we were able to do that and I look forward to being able to. Talk about that in more detail with you. Goal number four was a communications indicator and, um. Throughout the pandemic, how things were communicated to many, many stakeholders. Many medium platforms, et cetera. And then the fifth one was, had a very strong equity focus and again, that was one thing that. We felt strongly, we did not want to sort of. Put on any back burner in any way despite the conditions of this year and the pandemic. And so we did make advances in our equity inclusion and diversity work and that is going to be, that's in my report for you as well. So you may not see links to everything under evidence, but as Lynn has opportunity, I'm sure she'll be working on it quite a bit tomorrow. She'll make sure that she populates all of those for you.
Thank you. Comments? Alright. District updates.
Yeah, a few things. Hopefully this agenda item is winding down. This has been sort of the COVID, um, report. We do have a couple of things that. Not necessarily updates. They, they're basically, um, status quo for now. One is that the. Commissioner and also I did speak to the Director of Public Health this morning and she said the Department of Public Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health. Is also, uh, well, she's gonna be meeting with them. Uh, they've reduced their number of meetings, so now it's weekly. She's gonna meet with them and. Share some of my questions, but right now the commissioner is taking the posture that we will have no. Protocols or, uh, procedures in place for COVID mitigation in the fall. Obviously, he, uh, quant qualifies that with a statement unless that changes. So there are a few things though that I would like further clarification on, for example. If we are to wear masks, that's really not a, a big deal in terms of preparation. We have. Plenty of masks still available. We could go through the entire year if we had to. And it's as simple as a notification that people need to continue mask-wearing. However, something more involved like our medical waiting rooms. We were required to have medical waiting rooms in many of our buildings. We don't have extra space, so. In some cases, for example, at Parkview, we, uh, took over, the nurse took over the. Faculty room because people couldn't congregate anyway, so she took over the faculty room and used that as a medical waiting room because it had to have some very. Specific standards and had to be separate from the nurse's office. We could perhaps keep that intact into the school year and then dismantle it at some point if we had to. But there are some other schools, I'll use EMS as an example, where we used our boys and girls locker rooms. Because locker rooms were not allowed to be used. They were free space. We outfitted them to be medical waiting rooms. We really need those locker rooms if we're gonna be conducting classes, uh, as we typically do in the fall. So some of those things we need a little more lead time on, so. Anything that requires preparation of facilities or notification, I'm just asking for some clarification on that. But as of right now, um, he's anticipating we won't have any. Obviously, the two. Biggest determinants that we know of today would be number one, how many students ultimately get vaccinated. And number two, the trajectory of the Delta variant. Neither of which we have control over and, or nor do we have any predictive information at this point. So hopefully toward the end of the summer, maybe I'm thinking six to eight weeks from now. We can get a better idea of where we're headed and then we can make some of those adjustments before school starts. So that's the fall. The summer, the commissioner has, uh, recommended but not required. Mask-wearing and social distancing during the summer and so. Almost every, actually every district I spoke to, which are all of our neighboring districts and many. In, uh, neighboring counties, they're not requiring it in summer school. So we will have the ability to have all the windows open. We will be disinfecting, of course. We will use proper techniques, have. Hand sanitizer available because we, we still have all of these materials. We'll have students outdoors as much as possible. But they will not be required to wear masks. The recommendation actually is only for unvaccinated individuals. And at this point, we don't have authority to ask adults if they're vaccinated or not and so. It's a very difficult thing to enforce anyway, so it is, we are considering it optional. So of course, anyone who would like to wear a mask, we have them, we will provide them if necessary, but it is optional. And, um, we're using this as a transition to the fall. I'm very encouraged to say that the town figures have gone down. We, the last report we received was that there were seven cases in the town of Easton in two weeks. The figures as of today for the last two weeks is four cases in the town of Easton, so we're. Certainly headed in the right direction and hopefully won't be impacted by the Delta variant. That of course remains to be seen. I also was able to get some percentages just to give us an idea of where we are. Before the summer and right now, of course, children under the age of twelve are not yet. Able to get the vaccine, but in Easton, students twelve to fifteen, we have thirty percent of them. Thirty-one percent of them fully vaccinated at this point. There's another good percentage. That have their first vaccine and what we've seen is that generally speaking, barring a major. Negative reaction to that vaccine, people who get the first vaccine are getting the second vaccine, so we do expect that number to go up. And students or, or residents sixteen to nineteen is, uh, forty percent. Are completely vaccinated, so that does not include, uh, those who have had their first dose. So I will update you when I get new numbers on that. The town is running clinics, but they're finding that less and less people are coming. Their most recent clinic, right now they have zero, uh, people signed up, so that is plateauing or even. Potentially, if, if there are a few more that, that have zero participants, maybe closing down, but. We're thinking that going forward, residents will be able to get vaccinations at local pharmacies. And. Let's see. I think that's it for. The district updates and like I said. Barring any changes, hopefully, we will just have district update at the very beginning of the school year so we can talk about reopening and then. Maybe not have to have it anymore, but. That's the latest I have, uh, on that.
Great, thank you. Any questions, Nancy?
And this is probably a goofy question, but, um. So there's not gonna be any of those groups this summer, like last summer, last summer it was very important that everybody got on the same page. But are there any, uh, groups meeting like maybe even curriculum coordinators about. Setting up, you know, for each grade, the plan. We talked about this at our last meeting. Getting a robust start to the school year academically, like not teaching down. Fill, backfilling the gaps as you need to, but getting in and teaching. There, there's no group meetings for that, right?
We have had, well, there's a balance there because the staff is taking some well.
Which they absolutely deserve to because.
This summer, yeah, it's part of our wellness plan for them frankly, to make sure that they're prepared for the fall. However, we do have our management conference this summer and there is a curriculum leader meeting as well. And at those meetings, we are gonna be discussing the philosophy that the data is validating is. Seems to be most effective at this point, which is focusing on enrichment versus remediation. We don't want to presume that every student has been negatively impacted and doesn't have the skills and competencies to advance to the next grade level. And so what we, um. The approach that we're taking as a district, including in our summer school programming. Is to continue on with the grade level content. And seeing where any gaps may exist and just targeting those skills only. We're not going into fourth grade, for example, with a compacted third grade curriculum for the first two months of the school year. Because we cannot presume that that's necessary or that that's even necessary for every student. Did we, were, did we eliminate, um. Some content from each school, uh, from each grade? Absolutely, because time was limited and interactions were limited, but what we didn't. Reduce were the core skills and competencies. And so instead of maybe practicing something a certain number of times, we maybe did it once and moved on. And so again, the, the presumption is not that a student doesn't necessarily have those skills or that they need to be re-taught those skills. Perhaps it's a nuanced approach to, uh, some additional practice. Or revisiting something with fourth grade content, so it's more about. It's more about acceleration than remediation. Now, we do ha, as you know, we have hired with our grant funding temporarily several interventionists. In the event that we do find some considerable learning gaps in individual students. Or some very strong core concept skills and things like reading, which is a little more intense. Um, and so we will have that in place should the need arise for individual students.
Okay, um, speaking of the management conference, do you have a date on that yet?
Yes. Excuse me and I will check.
Thank you.
Yep, it's in August and it is. August ninth, excuse me, August ninth, tenth and eleventh. We do invite the school committee one of the days and I'll, I'll make sure we let you know which one as soon as possible. And I believe I also told you at the last meeting, but it, it's worth repeating, that the new teacher orientation is on August twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Again, I know Krista Marani, who coordinates that program from, from OA. Contacts you and invites you to one of those and, um, I'm sure she'll be doing that very soon.
She, she has already, yep. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, um, I don't think there's anything in public comments. I don't see anything.
Unless Jack DeLuca has a question.
He's, he's busy putting furniture together. Thank you very much.
Alright, um, superintendent notes.
Okay, just a couple of things. Summer school, Chrissy Pruitt gave you an update at the last meeting. We were able since then, um, we sent out invitations to everyone that. Teachers recommended would benefit from acceleration over the summer and it is called. The S E A, the Summer Enrichment Academy, so we are focusing on enrichment and. There were, of, of course, not everybody accepted. And so Chrissy then sent it out to all students and every. Available seat was filled, which we are very excited about. And so we will be able to provide services to, we typically have between two and two hundred and fifty students on campus during the summer. For extended year programs, special education programs. This year between the E S Y program and the S E A program, we're expecting closer to. Five fifty, six hundred students on campus. I also wanted to. Let people know just from a practical standpoint that Parkview will be completely offline. None of this programming will be taking place in Parkview. The building is not being utilized for any construction, uh, and, and there will not be any construction in the building. But the perimeter is going to be very busy. In fact, they're going to be, um, blocking off the entrance to the parking lot. And that whole area is going to be worked on as part of the project, so. The fields are the last piece, but that travel road, uh, is going to be. Part of the work this summer and so that is going to be completely offline. So. That will be offline, but also the R O parking lot is fortunately finally being repaved. And so all of it, I think, except for the actual circle or the driveway, all the rest of it will be repaved. So there will be a few days where that parking lot is, um. Out of service as well. We will have programming there, but of course people can park in the back of the school in that, in that large lot where the buses usually drop off. And I think. That's all I have.
Alright, um, school committee notes. Nancy?
I do not think I have anything today. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Jackie?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Jen?
Nothing here either.
I feel like I need to come up with something. Alright, um. Let me just pull up the wording for the next part. Hold on one second. I did not print this. So I'd like to make a motion to enter to executive session and not return to open session. For the purpose of discussion strategies in respect to a discussion of a contract. And in my opinion, having this discussion in public would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee.
Second. Wiseman, second.
Roll call of Durant, yes?
DeLuca, yes.
Anyone else?
Jackie, go.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Alrighty, um, and our next meeting, I was already mentioned, July twenty-second, right? So, alright, see you guys on the other side. Thank you.
Thank you.